Bienvenidos a otro stream de estudio. Este es el lugar donde hablábamos un poco antes. Y hoy vamos a hacer una conclusión. ¿Lo he jugado mal o algo malo? ¿O lo he jugado bien? Así que... En el último stream, empecé un simulador de la situación. Así que veremos los simuladores de moneda. Y luego veré en el Poker2 cloud. Crearé la mano aquí y veremos qué dice versus un oponente desequilibrado. Pero para empezar, esta es la mano. No tenemos historia de mano full. Pero lo que pasó es que Cut off abre. Y luego llamo pre flop. Luego en el flop decidí liderar, no mi estrategia normal, pero abrir un poco más pasivo. Así que decidí liderar. Él llama en el turno, yo lo pongo, él llama en el río. Siete de espadas, yo no tengo idea qué hacer. Y luego él pone alrededor de medio pot. Y decido doblar. Y el problema es que tiene chertén en su rango. Si elevaría chertén en el turno o en el flop, entonces esto sería bastante fácil porque su rango es set and flush draws solo. Y 7 con blind spot, entonces no estoy seguro de que valiera, pero check high flush draw, no estoy seguro. Así que primero veremos con Silver. Y también... ¿Qué diablos? También lo que quiero hacer es comenzar un simulador de Silver para, digamos, la situación del turno. Usando los rangos de flop, porque estoy en una simulación de flop. Y no sé cuán precisa... Cuando hago una simulación de flop, calcula los turnos y rivers. Así que cuán precisa esos turnos y rivers son en comparación con la simulación del turno. Así que... Veré ese también. Y... Creo que deberíamos comenzar con los simuladores de Silver. Tengo dos simuladores. Uno es... Cut off versus small blind. De hecho, el nombre está equivocado, debería ser Cut off versus small blind, tengo que cambiar eso. Así que es Cut off versus small blind, que es el caso real. Pero en el caso real... El... El cut off, en mi opinión, el small blind no llamaría con ace, king, ten, four, eso es doblar versus cut off open. Que es una estrategia Silver, pero no óptima versus el jugador. Así que aquí hay otro simulador versus big blind range, donde exactamente ace, king, ten, four está en nuestro rango. Pero para el small blind, quiero decir, podríamos filtrar todas las manos de ace, king, ten. Y veremos que tenemos ace, king, ten, two's. Pero tenemos ace, king, ten, four. No son solo combinaciones exactas. No tenemos el king high flush aquí. Bueno, con el ten high flush es, y es una pequeña parte de la bet. Lo gracioso es que aquí está el ace, king, ten, nine. Que sería suerte del rey, pero la combinación exacta no es suerte del rey, que es uno de los problemas aquí. Ace, king, ten, sin ace de espadas. Ace, king, ten, nine, ace, king, ten, nine. Y tenemos un ten high flush draw. Ahí está. Pero es ace, king, ten, nine, no lo tenemos. Eso va a ser un poco de problema porque no tenemos... Bueno, tenemos ace, king, ten, tres. Con el king high flush draw, que sería un check 100% de la vez. Así que el problema es que Silver... Silver no lidera esta mano. Que es idada versus oponente pasivo. Y aquí está el simulador versus big blind. Así que nuestro rango es un poco más amplio. No lidera con king high flush draw, checa todo. Así que ahí es donde nos equivocamos. En comparación con la estrategia Silver. En realidad, tengo algunos lectores sobre el oponente. Creo que es un poco pasivo, rec, ama jugar lento, no se mete en la vida. Así que... Necesito un regular pasivo, diría. La diferencia en dos simuladores es que en uno, aquí está mi rango, es small blind range versus cut off. Y en el otro tengo rango de big blind versus cut off. Y lo que pasa es que... Como... Lo interesante es que en mi rango de small blind... Llevo 21% en este board y eso es bastante alto en mi opinión. Pero el rango de call calling de small blinds es mucho más fuerte que el rango de cut off opening. Por eso lidera 21%, pero cuando big blind, que tiene alrededor de 40% de rango, lidera solo 7.8%. Así que mucho más donking con rango de small blind. Pero sí, ese es el problema. Nunca lideraría esta mano. Y luego incluso con suerte de ace... ¡Hola de la barra! ¡Boom, boom, boom! Incluso con ace de espadas, si lidera aquí... Y button close, entonces cuando el turno fue... Siete de clubs. Entonces con ace, king, ten, podemos ver que pone muy raramente, o incluso pone muy raramente. Y todos estos hands son algo más. Así que si tiene... Ace, king, ten, four, sería check. Ace, king, ten, six, pondría porque ahora tiene más out, ocho es un out de straight two. Pero sí, ace, king, ten, two's, pondría aquí, así que... Muy... Lo gracioso es que ace, king, ten, nine, que es el bloqueador del rey, realmente pondría, ponía en el turno, lo cual es raro. Y ace, king, ten, six, con ten high flush draw algo de la vez. Pero aparte de eso... No, pero... Pone ace, king, ten, two's, tipo fan. Ace, king, ten, nine, seguro. No estoy mal. Porque incluso versus... Un oponente equilibrado, un jugador Silver... Oponente, lidera manos similares, no exactamente mi mano, ace, king, ten, four, con king high flush draw. Pero lidera ace, king, ten, two's... Con ten high flush draw, que es la fuerza de la mano, es un poco más débil. Así que es algo en medio, no es lo suficientemente débil para bluff el turno, pero no es lo suficientemente fuerte como para valiar el turno. Pero versus oponente que es más pasivo, que pondría... Mucho más que Silver hace. Si pongo aquí, el range de Silver pondría solo 50% de rango. Y creo que... Este actual oponente dobla mucho más. Hasta 75, o sea, podemos verlo en el poker2. Así que poner en el turno no es horrible. Es como cuando llama y el river es siete de espadas. Ahora... Podemos ver que... Las manos de ace pone solo los no flush draws o no flushes, pero solo un par de combinaciones, casi checa 100% de rango. Y luego cuando el oponente pone medio pot, llama con todos los flushes. Así que check call es la estrategia Silver para el river. Pero la pregunta es, si mi oponente no bluffa el river, ¿cómo cambia? Y ahora alguien podría preguntar, ¿por qué no tiene blocks en su rango? Es porque es flop and turn, especialmente el turno de rango. No creo que tenga... Ning blocks en el river para con esto. Por supuesto que puedes enviarme un mensaje en el Discord, por favor. Por supuesto. Así que... Vamos a poner la mano en el poker2. Voy a eliminar esta para aquí, así que puedo ver realmente... Qué estamos haciendo y... Full hand es suficiente. Cut off abre. Luego button close y estábamos en el small blind. Llamamos y podemos dar nuestra mano exacta, que es... Ace, king, ten, four. Y luego big blind dobla. Y vamos al flop. Que es king, queen, nine, ¡boom! Y estamos aquí. Eh... No esa. Le pondría, six, big blind. Y él llama y pondría algo. Así que, ¿cuál es su rango de llamada? ¿Tenemos una mano de king high que no contiene straight? ¿Qué quieres decir? En el range de Silver o... King high flush. Bueno, tengo un king high flush que no contiene straight, pero... Silver no. Tiene ace, king, ten, ten, con dos bloqueadores. Pero eso cambia, y tiene una mano de ten high, ten high flush. En el river. Y luego versus un rango más amplio. No. El rango más amplio no tiene nada, pero no flushes, así que es mucho más polarizado. Sí, bueno, ace, check. No. ¿Qué pasa aquí? No, ace, check, incluso... Siempre tiene el check ten. Así que siempre tiene la straight. Así que probablemente el más cercano aquí es que con el ten high flush, va a ser check call. Así que más probablemente con king high flush, sería un check call si... Nos encontramos en el river con esta mano. Pero lo que pasa en Silver es que Silver es una estrategia versus otra estrategia Silver que trata de encontrar la forma óptima de jugar los rangos. Y ahora cuando nuestro oponente no es equilibrado, sus tendencias están centradas hacia ciertas partes de la estrategia. Entonces, la estrategia Silver no es óptima versus nuestro jugador también, y ese fue el problema. Ahora, en el poker2, quiero ver... ¿Le di demasiado peso al posible check ten? Y segundo, cuán amplio necesita valiar el river con sus flushes para que pueda llamar. Así que... Interesante ver. Pero en el flop, su rango de llamada... Pues pondría 9, 9+ aquí. ¿Dónde están los sets? Set strips plus. ¡Maldita sea! Esto es una vez más muy epiléptico. Pero... ¿Por qué no detiene? Me odia. Probablemente necesite reportar esto. Pero es nueve, queen, kings, and check ten. Y luego él pondría con... ¿Podemos encontrar... Dos pair? Plus, cut shot. Sí. Y luego él pondría con... Dos pair y cualquier flush draw, seguro. Y luego él pondría con... Flush draw con cut shot. Para el not flush draw. O cualquier flush draw, quiero decir. Sí, difícil de doblar, cualquier cut shot con cualquier flush draw. Así que... Este es su rango de llamada de flop. Sets. Check ten. No puede tener un wrap. Así que entonces son dos pairs con el cut shot, dos pairs con el flush draw, y cut shot con el flush draw. ¿Perdí algo? La pregunta de si llama con dos pairs es irrelevante porque va a doblarlos en el turno. Más probablemente, porque el turno no ayuda a sus dos pairs de ninguna manera. Así que creo que esto está bien, y luego definitivamente doblaría el resto. Llega el turno. Siete de clubs. Y decimos... Que pondría aquí. Y él llama. Y ahora su rango de llamada del turno es... Estimé que pondría pair sets al pot size bet, porque sabe que es realmente difícil obtener las implanadas. Así que necesita tener algo más, incluso un cut shot con los sets. Así que va a llamar con... ¿Estos no están en...? Así que va a llamar con la straight, seguro. Y luego va a llamar con... Hay los sets. Un set con al menos... Pero si pongo aquí, entonces le daría todo tipo de king, king, five, eight. Sí, pero no importa si llama en el flop, porque va a doblarlos en el turno de todos modos. Pero eso aumenta nuestra equidad de doble. Así que sí, volvamos. Así que démosle todos los dos pairs. Sí. Sí. No creo que nadie doblen dos pairs para donk. Así que estás en lo cierto, en realidad cambia cosas. Straight y... ¿Puedo hacer manualmente el rango? Sí, puedo. Sí, este es el poker2 cloud y es mucho diferente de la anterior. Pero estoy tratando de aprender. Puede hacer más cosas que la anterior, porque puedes hacer situaciones multijuicios y luego puedes hacer diferentes prances de caimtrey. Pero es un poco más complicado también. Pero creo que la visión de caimtrey está en la lista de cosas a hacer. Así que si lo hacen. Lo que a menudo preste es, como, ponemos aquí, y el oponente llama. Tenemos que darle la opción de doblar. De otra forma, el poker2 no sabe, como su rango de llamada es 27%. Así que el poker2 no sabe qué hace el oponente con su 73% de rango. Así que tenemos que dejar el doble. Así que completamos el caimtrey. Aquí están... Sets con ace, chap, ace, ten, que son los cut shots. Para los nuts. Creo que definitivamente va a llamar con eso. Y luego va a llamar con el set con el flush draw. Seguro. Y luego podría, ¿qué pasa con dos pairs sin flush draw? Eso podría ser. Pero, ¿por qué no podemos... Seleccionarlo? Así que, ¿tenemos que hacerlo manualmente? El flop. O déjame ver, ¿dónde está el flush draw? FD1, ok. Así que dos pairs. King, queen, king, nine, queen, nine. King, seven. Ok. Necesito dos pairs con el not flush draw. ¿Y perdí algo? Straight. Sets con el flush draw, sets con el cut shot, dos pairs sin flush draw. Creo que eso es todo. Y luego viene el anónimo siete de espadas. Y decimos checar nuestra mano. Y ahora oponente pone medio pot. Alrededor de pot. Y nos llaman o doblamos. ¡Guau! ¿Cómo podemos tener 77% de equidad versus él? Oh, sí. Está poniendo toda su rango, lo cual no es cierto. Por eso. Así que va a... ¿Tenemos una straight o mejor aquí? Pero él es... Pero nuestra equidad es bastante alta versus su rango, eso es... Tengo que volver, ¿perdí algo? O si los dos pairs son realmente una pequeña parte de su rango. Ahora él pondría... La straight. Seguro. Y luego pondría... Todos sus cuartos. ¿Dónde los encuentro? Bueno, no hay cuarto. Ahí está. Así que él pondría cuarto. Y creo que pondría el not flush. Para el valor. Y luego checaría el resto. Pero, ¿por qué su rango de chequen es cero? ¿Qué? ¿Por qué su rango de chequen es cero? ¿Por qué...? Este no es su rango completo. Check ten. Cuatro cuartos. Not flush, ¿qué? ¿Qué está mal aquí? ¿Por qué dice que pone 100% de su rango? Cuando esto no es 100% de su rango. ¿Por qué? Alguien ayúdame. Tiene strats, luego tiene sets con los flush, tiene set... Oh, eso es por qué, no tiene... Porque todos estos strats va a poner, aquí hay sets con cut shot, y me cuatro cuartos en el river va a poner, set con el flush draw, va a poner, y dos pairs con el flush draw, que hace el flush. Así que sí. Si este es su rango del turno, va a poner todo. No tiene check high flushes en su rango. Pero, ¿por qué deberíamos llamar? ¿Cómo podemos tener 77% versus su rango de puestos? ¿Es chertén realmente una pequeña parte de su rango? Y no podemos ver, no tenemos el rango aún. Pero voy a eliminar estos. No, en realidad, déjame ver si podemos hacer... Disculpe, 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 disculpe. ¿Dónde están los cuartos? Cuarto. Y luego... Si... Desactuar esto, ok. ¡Guau! Así que no estaba totalmente fuera de... Mi estimación de que el posible check ten... Podría realmente lastimar... La situación. Check ten es 90% de su rango en el river, porque estamos bloqueando los flush draws, estamos bloqueando los dos pairs. Y está doblando algunos de sus sets, si no tiene equidad adicional. Así que en el river, 90% de su rango es la check ten. Y la razón por la que creo que tiene un check ten es que en el flop... when I leave, he is probably feared of being free road, and if he raises, it's hard to get value. So he calls to see the safe turn. And then I put the turn, which means that either I'm representing check then or blockers. And then if he thinks that I have a check then, that specific player could easily call with the check then to bluff me off from my check then, which is pretty nice line because if I have a set with a flush draw, and he raises and I call if river pairs or flashes, he's going to lose the pit pot anyway. But if I have a check then, he can push me out from the split. So the thing is that if he has a check then, that was the problem. If, if he was another player who I think would raise check then on the turn, which a lot of players do, then the river would be somewhat easy. Not sure if he would value but check high flush. That makes makes it different. But he doesn't have check high flashes in his range without having full house. But the check then, I, I estimated that it might be a significant portion, and that's why the river situation was so hard. Because I had no idea how often he has to check then. When I was playing, whether it's fifteen percent or fifty or seventy-five, but if he phones pair sets on the turn, that's a goddamn ninety percent of his range, which makes the call very profitable. As we can see here that calling gives us expected stack of one forty-three and folding gives us seventy. Uh, he, he's kind of he, he's kind of passive, but if he takes the line with the check then, then the idea is to call the turn with the check then to maybe bluff me. I don't know if he bets check then or if he's scared of the flush completing. I don't know. That's, that's what we're trying to figure out here. If he bets check then, the call is massively plus E V. What if we put on his betting range check then with ace of spades without two spades? So if he has ace of spade blocker. Wow, only three percent. Now he bets only twenty-five percent, so if he would check back try check then and only bets it with the blocker, then the call is minus E V by a lot. But, but. Yeah. That's pretty much the question. Uh. The way I analyze hands and try to find solutions is I try to find the right questions to ask. Now there, now if he bets try check then, it's very profitable. If he bets check then only with ace of spade blocker, it's very non-profitable. So if he would check back, try check then, it's very non-profitable. So the important question is would he bet try check then or not? Without any blockers. But then the thing is that if he bets all of his check thens, but on the turn, he would call with any sets or straight. So he overcalls a set. Then probably the river is even more easier because he has way more full houses in his range. Checking does give us profitable situation, but once he bets. That's weird. Oh yeah, he has the try check then still. So. But yeah, it was still, still, even if he calls with trisets, if he bets try check then, it's still profitable. Which is a bit surprising. And now if he doesn't bet try check then, it's not profitable. So that, that's the important question. It's not whether he calls the turn with trisets or not. Which I thought might be important. It's not, it doesn't change anything. But the important question is would he try to bluff me with bare check then? And that's why, uh, I remember when, when I played the hand on the river, it, it's a spot where honestly I had no idea what to do. And I haven't had those kinds of situations in a long, long time where I'm like, I have three options on my table. I can check call, check fold or bet myself. And honestly, I have no idea which one of those is even better than the rest two. So all of the three options were equal. And it was quite bothering moment. Because I haven't been so lost in, in P L O situation probably in years. Um, I'm not always accurate, but I have some kind of idea whether check calling or betting would be better line there. And so on. So no idea. Yeah, and the problem with Sim is that the opponent is not playing with silver strategy. The silver would, I mean, kind of would have like ace of spade with some blockers that it blocks the river and so. And yeah, I, I remember in, in, when, when I was playing, that's why I've been talking about this hand for many days. Like what range? What do you mean in those situations? What situations you mean? Well, well, he's what would be the right word? I mean, he, he's the kind of player who doesn't get too aggressive with middle sets type of hands. So he's, he's kind of player that he is capable of doing bluffs. He is not like calling station passive, but he's kind of ref who doesn't raise lively. So if he has a combo draw, he is much more to call than to raise. Uh, he doesn't raise nuts always. Middle set, he can check twice. Doesn't cover value on the turn. And yeah, the only bluff on the river is the check then. Which he might decide if he puts me on check then, then he tries to push me from a split pot. Which is very common from these type of players. Doesn't want to let the stacks in with try try straight. But then it means that he should be worried about my flush. I'm not sure how much value that player gives to the not, I mean, the flush blocker. It should be a huge value whether he has a check then with one spade or not. But I, I've seen that line very often. When people have check then, and when I put the turn, I'm very polarized to check then or blockers. Maybe kings with high spade draw. But then it's about what blockers he have, and if he puts me on check then, I think he could do, then I'm not sure how often he would just check back check then, but I'm, I'm quite happy. If he bets check then, it's massively profitable to call, so I wasn't too far away, and check then is huge part of his range, it's ninety percent of his river range. So that was a surprise, how often he has a check then there. But if we assume he is not betting all of his check thens, then the E V of a call goes down a little. We see but small way more versus passive players. What, what I have done versus more, more passive not so balanced players is I, I use smaller sizing with very polarized range, like super nuts and bluffs. Because it creates a lot of fault equity. And then when we have value hand, but it's a bit vulnerable, then go for slightly bigger sizing. And if we, like, if we, if the board is whatever, and, and we have all the strong cards in our hand, it's hard for opponent to call, so we can go slightly smaller. But yeah, silver likes to make small bets. The problem with small bets is that it, it puts you on a lot of tough situations. So if, if you, what I see on the tables every day is people use small sizings without being balanced, without understanding how it affects their range and how to play turns and rivers after small, small, small bet on the flop. So they just copy the strategy that they see and probably use it in wrong situations. They use small sizings on boards they shouldn't. And, and that's the problem. How was the hand played? Yeah. Kind of opens, I call, and then I leave the flop, put the turn, and check fold the river. And I'm not sure about the lighting the not even about the flop. If I had ace of spades, I would like it more. Uh, the, the reason why he has check then so often is because I estimate he phones trisets on the turn when I put. Uh, I estimate that this player might fold a triset. Understanding that he is not going to fill up the boat often enough. So it's very, very tight range on the turn. If we give him all the sets on the turn, I think we did here. Okay, yeah, now it sets plus. Then on the river. What? Okay, now, it was one hundred first, so if he calls the turn with all the sets, now he has checked then forty-nine percent of times. But yeah, his range is a bit tight. And that's, that's the problem. Then if we give him all kinds of naked not flush draws and things, but he's, he's not the player. I mean, moderately, if he thinks I have the straight or he is not going to call my river shab if the river is a blank, which I'm going to do if I have the blockers, then he cannot call with the set because he is not hitting the full house often enough to get the implied odds, or, or he doesn't have enough implied odds probably. Yeah, I don't know. If, if I bet it's probably going to be profitable because he folds the check then. No, he's not calling with check then. When I bet the river then, pretty much I have flush or full house. And he doesn't have low flashes, that's the thing. Yeah, I, I mean, there's no part in his range where we, he would have just the check high flush. That's one of the problems. The way I assign his range, he doesn't have any hand that would have the check high flush, king, queen, ace, jack. But no, on the turn, he didn't have any of those. So here's his turn range, and there's no hand that would have naked a check high flush on the river. Oh, he has a check then. Something, something with the flush. Okay, but that's going to be really really, really small. Well, I estimated that with two pairs, he needs to have the flush draw one. Well, we can change it. Well, let's first see what is the E V of a bet? If we do make the bet and then his calling range would be probably any flush and then four houses. For sure. So, uh, if he doesn't have smaller flashes in his range, then betting is way worse than check calling. But our stat is seventy. So betting is plus ten bit lines in E V. So even betting is better than check folding with these assumptions, but if we give him the give him the check and then high flashes with two pairs. Let's wait until it calculates. Then if he calls with lower flashes, then betting, well, only two B B is better, so it doesn't really change much. So checking gives way more equity. But calling is super profitable. Wow. Yeah, it's a check decide. And if I had known that with really tight turn range, check then would be such a big portion of his range, I think I would have called. Probably he would show me king, king with not flush and I fold. The, the thing is, if he bets half a pot on the turn and he has a set, the turn call was minus EV for him. Yeah, it's a, it's a. I mean, the passive opponent means that he is not like super scared. But he could play, I, I could see, if, if he shows check then here, I wouldn't be surprised. Let me put it this way. If I had to decide one player from the pool who could play check then this way, this would be one candidate. But. The thing is, i- if he calls the turn with the triset. Then he's going to hit the set one out of four times. So, uh, where we are on the turn. Here, when I put it, bet twenty. Then. If he takes thirty, actually, if he takes thirty value on the river, it is plus EV for him. Cause he needs twenty as implied odds. And now if I call thirty here. It was slightly profitable. Oh, shadow maniac. The, the word passive, what, what would be the good way? That would, the good word would be wreck. Who. Doesn't stack off without. A wreck who doesn't value bet wide enough. I think that would be the word. But it's just, when I put the turn, if he puts me on check then, then that's the way he would probably play his check then. Or he would check it back on the river. I don't know. There's high portion. Or high probability when the turn flashes and pairs. He might get scared and just check back the check then. Yeah. Well, I, I think the passive is the right word. The. The key here is the check then. Everything else is very simple. I'm, I'm quite sure that everything else is defined. Very accurately, but the check then gives the problem. That's why I love PLO, PLO ten and ninety-nine percent of PLO twenty-five. Opponents, because they don't play check then that way. They don't put me in tough decisions. Yeah, uh, I don't always have check then, but. Of course I have ace king ten here, but the thing is, how does he think? And. Often what happens is. What I have seen when I, I worked with a lot of. Players from these states, PLO twenty-five. Plus minus one. Um, what often happens is. When people think about opponent's hand or range, very often they think about the hand. So. They're fixated to the one area of the range. Like here. I need the flop hitting, so he might be wide. When I put the turn. He might think that, oh, that looks like a check then, and then he gets this fixated idea that I have a check then. Without thinking the whole range. And I, I've seen this happen so often when people don't define the whole range. Like here, um. This is his turn calling range. Often. People can fixate it that they only see one of these four or two of these four. They miss some portion of his range and that's when they start to do mistakes. As they don't play versus the whole range. Yeah, turn, I, I estimate he should fold trisets on the turn. Not sure if he does, but. I mean. You need to call with the queens. You either need implied odds or you need to call the black river. It's about the opponent's range. Cause most likely I'm going to fire the black river. He, he has to be expecting that if river is a blank, there's going to be a bet. So it's, then he should define how often I have. Pure bluffs, semi-bluffs compared to the value hands of check then. Yeah, I'm going to fire. Uh, I mean with ace king, I'm not, it's not enough showdown value versus his range. Which makes check then very profitable for him to call, which is one can. Probably if check then is such a big portion of his range, I shouldn't fire the river. That was, that was surprising. Nasty hand, and that's, that's what you get when, when you start. To get out of line. Uh, my idea when I was playing, my idea was to bet the river. If it's a blank, but now when I see how often he has a check then, I mean, even if he calls with just a set. Then check then is half of his range. And if he folds trisets, at least some of them. The. Probability of check then goes even higher. So if he calls in like pocket kings. Tri kings and folds tri queens and nines, then he has like seventy, seventy-five percent of check then. So I shouldn't fire the river. So probably seven of spades might have saved me some money even. Who knows? But wow. That's an interesting hand. Uh, I'm going to do the sim now, cause I want to answer the question. How accurate each one should we use? Let's use the one with wider ranges. So here's, it's actually Kaddaf. Versus Button. And let's do. Omaha turn. And we hit the turn here. So the pot is forty. And one eighty-one. So I'm going to compare. How much there is difference when we do the flop simulation and just see the turn in that simulation compared. When we do the turn simulation. Cause if the difference is not huge, then it saves a ton of time just to do the. Flop simulation and use that for then and river strategies. Uh, what kind of options we have here? We have. Fifty percent and hundred percent. And fifty and hundred on the river. Alright? Half a pot and pot. No. Cause the raise is always hundred percent. So we put here fifty percent raise or bet or hundred percent raise. But then or, or bet, sorry, and raise is always hundred percent. Alright, so now it's exactly the same. How are you today? Oh, I had a better, it went all the way to four AM before I went to bed. I watched the Carphone Challenge and then. I started to talk about, there's going to be some kind of live, well, not live, but. Uh, featured PLO two hundred games on Rounders Casino. Where they were looking for players. And I'm quite interested in that. I, I put a thread on Discord if anyone wants to buy shares if it actually happens. But yeah, Rounders Casino is kind of tricky because you have to, you can only deposit with Bitcoins and. I have no Bitcoins. I understand nothing about Bitcoins. So it's a bit tricky, but if that happens, it, it might be a fun. So when the Bitcoin aid, when I was trying to figure out that and how, how to deposit and, and so on. And tomorrow, this morning, we had, we have twenty-five degrees below zero in Celsius. But I had problems with my car and then I helped my friend. He had a problem with his car. Most cars are not built. Built to run below twenty in Celsius. So it's, it's freaking cold, which reminds me, I have to put the heater on. To my car, otherwise it just won't start. There we go. So I can get to my warm. Car. So now, now the game tree is the same and now we need just ranges. That we enter the turn. And let's say. The out of position player has the leading part. So here is the flop. And then Button calls. One point eight percent. Oh yeah, it is. One point eight percent of total combinations, because. Big plan is only seven point eight percent. Oh man, I, I think we need to do with a small blind. Small blind one, because there the leading range is a bit wider. There he needs thirty, uh, sorry. Twenty-one percent. Let's use this one. So the small blind ones. Zero percent. Only sixty-six hands. Can it be that low? Yeah, it is. Tight range, but leading often. Yeah, but it's really small. It's only sixty-six combinations. But it, it. But sixty-six, how much is this one? So this is actually wider. So never mind. Never mind. It's used to be blind. The frequency is higher with small blind, but. The actual ranges are. Not wider. I will put this one to make sure we have it right. Yeah. So now we have the ranges. I have to write down what is the situation on, on the sim. And it works with blind. Seventy-five call. On the flop. Alright? And the board is king, queen, nine, seven. Alright? Wow, only two gigabytes of RAM for the turn. Wow. Pre-flop is two hundred fifty gigabytes and then the flop. If you give multiple bet sizing for post-flop, it's over two hundred gigabytes. Now we, when, when we hit the turn with tight ranges, it's only two gigabytes. Uh, in terms of time, this should be really fast. I mean, there's, there's only. Oh man, this, this should be like. I don't know. Are we talking about minutes even or seconds? We're talking about seconds. We head to the ten iterations per node in ten seconds. Wow. It, it's often ten iterations per node is where you can start to find. Some consistency. But pretty much when this, uh, the EV number doesn't change much, that's when it's mostly done. But yeah, wow. So we can start to compare. The differences. Uh, this. On the left is the flop simulation. And this one is the. New simulation for the turn. And okay, there's, at least you can see. Differences already. And it has two sizings for the turn. Not sure if that's. What we should have. Should we have just the pot size on the turn or not? But this is what I gave. But we can see that, that the bottom is more accurate simulation. They have same ranges, same game tree, same board. And you can see that in the accurate simulation. The half a pot range, a half a pot bet is nine percent frequency. On the previous, it's fifteen point six. And pot sizing is thirty-two versus thirty-six. So slightly more potting. Checking fifty-one, fifty-five. So it's, it's not like completely out of the line, but. I think the difference is significant. And now the sim seems to be ready, more or less. Going to change few hands, but yeah. So it looks like if, if we want to solve turn and river situations. We need to do separate sims for turn and river. Cause if the difference is. This bit on the turn, then it goes exponentially higher on the river and the river frequencies are way off the scale. But yeah. Wow. We don't bet the flop with king high flush draw even. So hard to see. We don't have any. King high flushes here, flush draws. Which is a bit weird. But that was the big plan strategy. Code calling of three bet situation. Uh, what code call of three betting situation? No idea what you're talking about. Have I missed something? Alright, but the takeaway here is now the half a pot frequency goes even lower and full pot goes even higher. So you can see that. There is quite a bit different. Someone opens V three, but then we have most callers behind us. What? Can't remember. Have I missed something? Okay, I don't remember. But. Now I know for sure that to do a post-flop solver work, we need to run turns and rivers separately. Cause running just the flop gives. Wow, it just goes down and down and down. And this goes up and up and up the longer we let it run. Wow, the difference just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Wow. The difference just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So now I know, have to run the turn and rivers. It's on Discord. Uh, my brain doesn't work. Doesn't ring any bell. I have to go to Discord and see what we were talking about. Uh, I'm gonna go. Thanks for joining. At least I caught caught an answer to the hand that bothered me for a couple of days. So now I have peace of mind. And not sure if, well, I can stream today. Uh, maybe tomorrow, maybe on Sunday. Let's see. I hope, at least I have to play a lot on, on weekend to grind the goddamn bonus. How much I'm missing? I played a few hands yesterday. Let me see, let me see. Poker challenge, two thousand points, three thousand missing, so six hundred in rate. That's like fifteen hours. When does it end? Why, why do I always get into this situation where I need to grind the last day my ass of four days, one hour? And fifteen hours, that's three hours a day, four hours a day. Fuck me. I, I have to start grinding. Yeah, ends on Tuesday afternoon. So it looks like I'm going to grind the whole Monday. Yeah, I, I'm really good in progress nation. Same, the same thing happened last time and then the last stream was something like seven hours or what was it? I thought it's like one, two hours, but we raised twenty-five dollars an hour. Because we couldn't win the pots and, and, but it was a fun stream. We, I mean, last time we booked huge winnings. In the end, it was like plus one thousand stream. But seems to be the same thing once again. So lots of grinding ahead. But now I, I have to go and hope to see you on the weekend. Let's see if I can stream the games or not. But see you later. Bye-bye.